At this time, I'd like for us to do some introductions.
Carrie Wheeler, Communications Intern.
Bridget Dory, Communications Manager.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Thank you so much, and I'm Stephanie Summeral-Dumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We will start our meeting, as we always do, with silent prayer, and after which, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would ask for a special prayer for my family. There was just a beautiful baby boy that was born and immediately passed last night. So, we're in prayer for our family, and I would ask prayers for all of you. So, just a moment of prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next order of business is presentations. We have a proclamation, and my understanding, someone's here to receive the proclamation. We will read the proclamation, and you can make your comments, and then we'll come down and take a picture with you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Okay. And the proclamation recognizing Foster Care Month, where as all children deserve to live in a safe, happy, and healthy environment, and where as foster parents and kinship caregivers voluntarily give of their time, love, support, and home to children and families who need them, and where as thanks to these everyday heroes, children and teens find safe havens where they can grow, dream, and realize their full potential. And where as more than eighteen hundred Hamilton County children are in agency custody, with almost nine hundred living in foster homes, and more than five hundred residing with kin. And where as May is recognized locally and across the country as National Foster Care Month to salute the compassionate people who make a difference by serving as foster parents, relative caregivers, mentors, advocates, caseworkers, and volunteers. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners recognize the contributions of all those who are making a difference in the lives of children in foster care and kinship placements. And we encourage residents to reach out to a local foster care agency and inquire how they can help change a child's life forever. Be it further proclaim that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Foster Care Month in all of Hamilton County, and this is signed by all of our commissioners. Or they will have some words to say, would you like to say something first?
Yes, and I will be brief. Commissioners, thank you for this proclamation and for helping us call attention to National Foster Care Month. We have tremendous appreciation for the hundreds of foster parents and kin who offer protection and care for children every day. We also thank our community partners who help recruit, train, and support foster parents. This year's campaign, we focus on kinship care. We know when children cannot safely remain with parents, kin are the best option to make sure children remain connected to their family, to their community, and to their culture. Your support is greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
I just want to thank the foster parents and kinship parents, and also acknowledge that Hamilton County has been a leader, particularly on kinship care. I know the state is trying to catch up. But also, I think we could take this month to help get the word out more. A lot of times with kinship care, they just do it. And we ran into some folks when we were out there with the five-on-three relief bus. One lady was coming just to, you know, help with the not getting evicted. And she told her story, and that's why I want to thank Job and Family Services, because when you come up there, they say, "Tell me your story," versus just, "You just need this one thing." And found out that unfortunately, her daughter had passed away unexpectedly from an aneurysm. And she just went right in and took care, "I have to take care of my grandkids, but I'm retired." And they said, "Well, do you know about the kinship program?" She said, "No, what is that?" And they started talking to her, and tears rolled down her face because she didn't know that this was available to help her out there. So, definitely proclamation to recognize the month and to double down, if you will, in terms of getting the word out, particularly around kinship care, as you've indicated, because a lot of people just do it, and they have no idea that there's some help that we have available for them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Yeah, this is a critically important recognition, I think, not only to JFS, but to all the families that participate, and to the kids that are in the system. And, you know, I know we're all looking out for the welfare of these kids, but we do need to recruit good relatives and good parents to take care of them when they are in an unsafe environment. So, I too am proud of the commitment that Hamilton County has made, especially to kinship care. We passed a levy related to making sure that those kin got stipends similar to what a foster parent gets, so if they're available and able to watch one of their kin. So, thank you for bringing that. I like that that's the emphasis this time. I mean, I really think it's important that people know that that's available, so thank you for what you're doing over at JFS.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're gonna come down and take a picture with you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Commissioner Summeral-Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We will move forward with public comments, and I have a few here. Michelle Heist.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michelle Heist. I'm the Union Chief Steward for Local 1768, representing the employees at Hamilton County Job and Family Services. And I will be brief, unlike other times. On Tuesday, when Holly came back with the recommendations, again, what was not heard was any pay incentives or retention incentives for county employees, and of course, I'm here to speak specifically for JFS. I do appreciate that County Commissioner Reese spoke about that on Tuesday, and then she spoke about it last week. But again, didn't hear anything about retention incentives for employees. I just want you all to know, and for everyone listening, that JFS employees are the pillar in this community. For many, they are the first thought or a recommendation for families to come to when they are in need. So, again, I know that you all are looking at recommendations and listening for recommendations, but we are really, really hoping to hear something different, because I can tell you now, the employees, they are fired up, and they are ready to go, and we are willing to do what we have to do in order for you all to listen and to hear us and to make moves on our behalf. Thank you so much, you all have a good afternoon.
Thank you so much. Brian Grayson, Brennan Grayson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Brennan Grayson, I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati Interfaith Worker Center, and do I hit the timer?
No, she'll do it, and it's two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
Thank you, okay.
I'm shooting for a minute thirty.
You should have kept talking.
So, I'm here on behalf of the Cincinnati Interfaith Worker Center. We are a nonprofit charitable organization that helps workers without a union do what they need to do to protect their rights and to stay safe on the job. So, we fight wage theft, we've been doing it for years. We do safety trainings in English and Spanish. We're the first OSHA-certified trainer in Spanish in the region. And we also do litigation and representing employees in discrimination suits. So, what I'm here to talk about is the workforce development funding proposals and recommendations that were made by Ernst &amp; Young and the staff here at Hamilton County. We find that those recommendations were sorely lacking, both in process and in substance. Our organization was not consulted as a stakeholder group, and I have surveyed labor organizations and others who represent job seekers. They were also not consulted as a stakeholder group. And what we feel is that this lack of engagement with job seekers and job holders has fatally flawed the recommendations from Ernst &amp; Young with regard to the workforce development funding recommendations. So, our strong recommendation is that those Ernst &amp; Young suggestions really be tabled, because there's a lot more that can be done with eight point five million dollars in workforce investment. And unless the Commissioners are hearing from working people and their representatives about how to do it creatively, and how to do it with working people at the table, it's not going to work. And so, we hope you'll read our letter and look at our materials and open a conversation through the grant-making process or some other process to really hear from working people about what workforce development could mean if they had a meaningful role in the process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as relates to workforce and the other areas, Brennan, that are mentioned, we have people, agencies that distribute the money, of course, and then we'll have an application period where any applicant that feels they can provide workforce services, training, education, they're more than welcome to apply for the monies that have been allocated. But we... Sure, you can.
You know, our main concern is that the Ernst &amp; Young matrix identifies a specific or project within the Chamber of Commerce to receive a million dollars. That's a problem. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Griffin.
Thank you very much. Wasn't really coming here to speak today, but I'm gonna make some brief comments. First thing I'd like to do is, very sorry for your loss, Ms. Stephanie.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thinking of your family. Ms. Alicia, I understand you've had a little back injury or had some pain with your back, and I'm sorry to hear that, and I hope you're doing well. Ms. Denise, I'm very glad you are well and your family is whole and well. So, just get that out of the way. I am Brian Griffin, I'm here with the Cincinnati AFL-CIO Labor Council, and much of what I would have to say would be echoing some of the content that Mr. Grayson just put in. I guess my point in this is that I spent a lot of yesterday and today doing a great deal of homework about this. It really wasn't on my radar before that, and probably should have been, and certainly, that's partly on me. But I would also wonder, you know, humbled as I am to do this job, I represent Cincinnati AFL-CIO, and it wasn't on my radar. We weren't aware of the conversations ongoing. I checked around with all the major leaders, went to all the usual suspects, tried to find who was. And there's a great lack of understanding on the part of labor as to the process, the participation, who was informed, who was there. So, I guess, yes, a lot of work has gone into this. A great deal of consideration has gone into this. To argue with the goals of this would be to argue with God, mother, country, and apple pie. I'm not here to do that. But I used to tell my kids, it's more important how you do a thing than what you do. And I would like to think that there's some consideration to that, that the outcome of this will be formed in how we go about it. And I really look at the outcome of the process to this point, and I have to question whether or not the right representation will in fact get the right outcome. And then you have to question if the right representation is not in place, will there not be a question mark overall as to the outcome? And I would ask you to take a breath and do some reconsideration, and look at the right representation, and make sure that working people and those who represent working people are involved in that, and it is informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also gonna do something I loathe than everybody else, and that is, I have to go after my statements, so thank you.
Yeah. Dave Kemper. Dave Kemper?
Yes, hi there, I'm speaking remotely. Thank you very much. Doesn't look like I know how to turn my camera on here. But I promise you that the still picture's really a better look anyway. I'll be as quick as I can. My name is Dave Kemper, and I am with the Economic Policy Institute, a Washington DC-based think tank that partners with, among other things, the Cincinnati Interfaith Worker Center. And I was asked to come here today to very briefly offer some national context on the importance of attaching labor standards to workforce development dollars. The American Rescue Plan Act in particular, and the state and local fiscal recovery funds that it provides, is a unique moment in time to create transformative investments and to build long-lasting, high-wage, high-benefit jobs in communities that need them. You may have heard a lot these days about what's called the Great Resignation. But in truth, the economists I work with insist that it's not a great resignation. What it is, is a great reallocation, where workers up and down the economic ladder are shifting to better jobs whenever they can, because opportunities are available. This is vitally important when thinking about workforce development, because workers will have an opportunity to exit a workforce development project if the jobs do not have decent wages, decent benefits, and high labor standards. And it is a waste of the county's money, a waste of ARPA dollars, to invest money in a workforce development program that does not retain workers all the way through the program. Similarly, our experience nationally suggests that high-road labor standards for workforce development reduce turnover in general, but also create a level playing field so that local businesses are not forced to compete against low-wage, out-of-the-area employers who try to come in and scoop up workers for low-wage jobs. We therefore think that spending public dollars on workforce development should be closely attached to labor standards. You already have an excellent wage theft ordinance in Cincinnati and some other things that you could do, but ensuring that jobs pay prevailing wage, ensuring that jobs meet all the good high labor standards of fair scheduling and other things, will ensure that the program is the most successful it can be for the dollars it has, and will result in the outcome you would like to achieve, which is building a better workforce, building more sustainable economies in the long run. And I appreciate the committee's time, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments, and certainly, retention of workers is extremely important to our board, and making sure that wages are where they need to be in order to not only retain, but to recruit and hire those. I appreciate your comments, and we will be reviewing what you have said and also what you have said. So, those are the end of... Did you want to make a comment? Yeah, okay, Vice President Reese.
Thank you, thanks for the testimony. I do want to ask the Administrator, because this is an important decision that we have to make. And I know when we first, I know Administrator Aludo, you had recommended us go this route with Ernst &amp; Young. I had some questions about it, but we ultimately moved in that direction, and was under the impression that all the stakeholders that were at the table, I don't know who was, but could you maybe address that, what was said today? Because we're getting emails like crazy, and people saying they weren't included, and they didn't have a voice, and we were... This is, I was a little concerned about turnover to Ernst &amp; Young out of Atlanta. But can you maybe talk about that or address something? I don't want them leaving, if they were involved, or what the process is now, what was the thinking of Ernst &amp; Young? Because we weren't involved, the Commissioners were not involved in that process.
Just a couple of comments I make, Commissioners, I can certainly provide you with the full list of stakeholders who were included. I don't have it with me, I'm just receiving this right now. But I can certainly get back to you on the full list of stakeholders who were a part of it. I will say that, you know, for the most part, Ernst &amp; Young was involved with reflecting through in a report the recommendations and the conversations of the stakeholders who were there. So, if there were people who feel that they were left out, then clearly, their comments were not reflected through. But I do want to say that, for the most part, while there were some areas where Ernst &amp; Young would rely upon their national expertise to say, "We would also recommend the county look at this, that, or the other," for the most part, they were reflecting the conversation and the input of stakeholders who were there. So, I can get back to you on who were all those stakeholders, and in particular, it seems the conversation today is focused on workforce. I'm happy to do that. I don't have it with me today, but I can get it to you this afternoon, most likely.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that's very important. I know this was a new process. You know, we didn't, I didn't get to talk to them like we did with Bingos. A young lady came from the organization, and she presented, and I know that Holly presented it, but wanted to... I know Ernst &amp; Young was paid to put these pieces together, and I would have loved to have been able to question them directly on some things, some findings, and maybe some things that they heard, and who did they talk to. So, I don't mean to put this all on you, but I think that that's one of the missing links in the process that Ernst &amp; Young, for me, they're just a, they're just a name. I don't know who they are, and what they did, and how they did it. And we're getting some feedback from folks, it's not to say all of the categories were, you know, not well-represented, but we just need to know this, because I know I haven't talked to them about what did they find after they talked to the people, and who did they talk to. So, I think, you know, I do think we need to take a hard look before we do our final vote, because like, you know, we all agree that we got to get this right, this is a one-time opportunity. And this is our long, I guess, long-term investment piece that we want to make sure that we get right. But I not only did this email, I'm getting other emails, phone calls, and I started having it, but who did Ernst &amp; Young meet with with all this money we done gave them? Well, who did they meet? Did they meet with anybody? I mean, I could have met with a handful of people that it seems like it, but maybe they did do a broader piece, and we can publicly put that out there. But also have a role for those who were left behind that are, you know, you can't leave labor out. I mean, that's major workforce. I mean, a lot of our workers come from labor. So, just looking at that, and if you see some areas that were left out, if there's a thing you can recommend to us, how do they plug in, and we get feedback from other groups that may have been left behind? Because I have gotten calls, not just from this group, but for some other groups that have said they've been left behind. I know they can come in for two minutes, but two minutes is different than Ernst &amp; Young sitting down with them and giving them real dialogue. It's different than coming here for two minutes and, you know, walking out the door. So, hopefully, there's some process, some opportunity, something in Ernst &amp; Young's contract that they can pick up some of these areas, important partners that were been left behind. Maybe you have a recommendation for us, how we handle that, I would love to hear.
Madam President, if I could just briefly, so certainly want to work with the Board as we look to refine recommendations and move forward with recommendations on this. I will say, as it relates to Ernst &amp; Young and their agreement with the county, they were charged with facilitating the stakeholder sessions and stakeholders that were invited to the table through the county. So, I don't want to leave the impression that Ernst &amp; Young was charged with going out and going into the community and meeting with other stakeholders. Their charge was facilitating the stakeholder sessions, four or five stakeholder sessions that we had, and reflecting that stakeholder conversation back in a report and recommendation. So, I don't want to, I don't want to leave the impression that we had charged them with going out, picking people to meet with, and that they left certain groups out. They were facilitating a conversation that was convened, that they then reported back to the county on. So, just some clarification in terms of what they were charged with. But in terms of moving forward, if we, if the Board feels that there were stakeholders that were left out, and some more input is needed in any one of these recommended areas, we can certainly look to address that prior to moving forward on any recommendation.
So, okay, yeah, I wanted to make a comment. And so, Jeff, as you give us those names, it will also be inclusive of what areas they were representing, correct?
Of course, yes.
And then the stakeholders process, I know was a long process, about how many weeks was it?
It took place over several months, but I would also just remind more the public, I know the Board is aware of this, that it really started in advance of that, we started some pre-stakeholder discussions. We had even public comment periods going back into the summer when we initially received the information that we were going to get ARPA funding. We, I think, a lot of those were virtual, because we were still meeting virtually at that point in time. But it really started, the stakeholder process started well in advance of the actual Ernst &amp; Young meetings, but those were the culmination of the stakeholder process that occurred in person, for the most part. There was one virtual session, I believe, over the course of several months, starting in, I want to say, maybe late October, early November, and stretching into early January.
And I know we were very cognizant of the fact that we wanted to be diverse with our stakeholder groups, and if labor was not included, we really need to take a look at that, so Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. So, thank you to the speakers for bringing this to our attention, appreciate it. Labor was at the workforce table, building trades had a spot, and I made sure of that. So, just let's be clear on that point. And so, while others may not have been represented, there was an effort, as you say, to make sure that there was diverse representation at the table. I'm happy to provide it to you, we've got it in the office. So, but to the point of now a concern coming up, and it's reflected of the one million, right? That's the set aside in the workforce category, as I understand it. And so, I think it's unfortunate it's coming this late in the process. However, we haven't voted a final vote yet, and so, I will be interested in reading through the letter, and that I think there are some suggestions as to how we might want to do this differently or move forward. So, open to having that conversation. I do think, you know, I did ask early on if we could have public hearings, we did not have public hearings. And so, I do wonder if some of this would have been flushed out if we had allowed ourselves to gather that information through broad public hearings in the evening, as we do during budget processes. But regardless, here we are, we've got the information in front of us, and so, we'll take a good look at it. But regardless, um, here we are. Uh, we've got the information in front of us and so we'll take a, a good look at it and try to evaluate what was proposed. Because I don't, I don't have the framework for the million to begin with. I mean, we have some information, but I think it might be useful to get more information about that 1 million, about that recommendation and then lay this on top of it to see where we all land with that. So I think it's a conversation we need to have with the administration um as we try to sort through this information before a final vote.
Madam President. Yeah, can I just uh comment about the public hearing aspect of it? Yeah, um, that there was a discussion of public hearings, but we made many attempts to have public comments uh from our public. So the, the the broad brush of it all is we wanted to make sure that our public had input for, you know, it's public hearings or public comments, one or the other. Um, so we did make sure uh that the public uh was heard. Now, everybody didn't know what was going on. Um, so we, we always talk about our marketing and making sure we get out to more people. Uh, but we did uh allow many times for public comments like you did today. Um, so we wanted to make sure we did that. Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I guess my question, I don't know if it's a miscommunication among labor, but it just seems odd. We said they were included and the president of the AFL-CIO comes in here and he said he made a bunch of phone calls to all the labor people he knew and he was told nobody was included. I guess I misunderstood the process because, you know, I wasn't really, you know, I wasn't really keen. If you go back to the videos, I was not very keen on going with this Ernst &amp; Young. There's over a hundred thousand dollars for consultant. I thought that they were supposed to, I knew they were going to have these uh sessions and I missed, misunderstood it. But I thought after the sessions, they would have a public presentation or something like that. So that's where I misunderstood. I didn't know it was uh hundred thousand plus dollars to have some breakout sessions. I mean, we've got very uh qualified people. And I kept saying, we got qualified people in Cincinnati. We got qualified people that live here. Uh, but you know, I, I was not, uh, I was in the minority in that thought. So I just misunderstood the process. And I thought that there was an outreach um to the public. And uh, and as we have heard things, you're absolutely right. We've heard things, disabled housing, we made those adjustments. We heard some of the other uh pieces, but I guess I just misunderstood the process. Uh, unlike the, when we do the um, when we do the budget, it's, you know, we don't go out and get an outside person that bring people together. We've got, the administration brings it to us and then we have these hearings that we've had in the evening. So maybe I misunderstood the role of Ernst &amp; Young. Um, and uh, but you're right, it's not too late. Now we can make some uh adjustments. But I think we need to make sure we did cast a wide net before we make those adjustments because there may be somebody else that we didn't know that was not included or has an idea that maybe should be included. So just want to get more of a process uh from the administration on um how we can move forward as a board to make sure that, you know, whether we go along with it or not, uh, everybody had a chance. And so I, I'm willing to uh do that. But we did have nighttime and nobody came at night. So I don't know. We have more people in the daytime than we have people at nighttime. So I don't know what that process is, um, but um, if the administration could get something to us, I, I would like to know what happened with that. It does seem like it was a, some kind of drop of the ball. I don't know if this might have been miscommunication, but you know, he's, he did come up here and say that labor, uh, he's made some calls and they didn't feel like they were included. So.
So can I just respond?
Sure, sure.
Building Trades had a seat at the table. Um, they're, they're on the list. I checked it. I double-checked it. Um, so I don't know if, and I would have to dig in to see if that individual, they, they were notified. Uh, and I think they did attend a meeting. So they, they were there. Um, so I do think there is uh miscommunication about this particular issue. Um, I don't think it was raised, I, I, to my knowledge, um, at the stakeholder meetings. But to, to your question about process, so we had staff and Ernst &amp; Young working together to put together kind of experts in these different fields um to help inform recommendations that came in front of this board. But then just mu- much like a budget process, we get recommendations and then we hear from the public as to how they view the recommendations and if there are suggestions that we, that people like the recommendations or they don't, or they have other suggestions. This process has not played out like that. We did not have a public hearing and to my view, and I respect the idea that we've got public comment on Thursdays, but it wasn't a public hearing and we generally would, with this much money, would have a process where we have a public hearing. It's out in the community. It's in the evening. People are notified and they get to participate. And I do think um, we, I, I personally missed that piece of this process. And so, you know, it's not too late uh to do that if we want to do that or take the comments that we got today and then try to figure out what was recommended to us, how this responds to that, and then where as we po- policymakers want to go with, you know, moving that million forward. So I think we've got some work to do uh in response to what we've heard today, but this has been a different kind of process um in many ways, uh, but I don't want to necessarily fault the administration. I mean, I think people were doing um what they thought was the best way to try to get a larger view conversation happening around these very important housing workforce, mental health and get folks around that table. And I think it would be instructive for us to see that list. I mean, I've, I've got it. I haven't reviewed it in a while, but to see who was at the table. So we're better informed about that and reminded of it. Um, but, but as, you know, as I said, with the issue in front of us, um, I think we need to take a look and see where we land on it. So happy to do that work.
That was good. Madam President, I'm not, I just want to say I'm not blaming administration. I want to clear that up. I'm not blaming administration. I am looking at this over a hundred thousand dollars to Ernst &amp; Young. I really want to know what did we get for a hundred, over a hundred thousand dollars? However, we would love to, no, it's a million for the program that, that, but I'm talking about the consulting contract that we had. So um, and I'm always open for hearing from the public. So if that's what the board wants to do, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
Well, I think it's apples and oranges. You're talking public hearing, public comments. I can remember, I don't have amnesia about it. We had a lot of agency people and public call um to make comments, either came in during the day or on Zoom uh talking about how the board has worked so well with the ARP money and where we're allocating the money. Of course, we're always open to discussion. But uh, you know, whether or not people prefer public hearings or public comments, as you were saying, people don't usually come out, but if they're able to do Zoom or we had some comments, um, quite a few uh about um the allocation of the money. So I mean, uh, you know, I, I think public hearing, public comment, that discussion is really uh not one to have unless um the board decides they want to do it, but we did not get as much input as we wanted. But we appreciate the input that we got and it was uh great input, especially from agencies. Um. Okay, uh, let's move forward and then we're, this is not over. We're just, will be more discussion and we'll, we'll look at uh who was included, who wasn't included, whether or not um we're allocating where we need to. Are there additional people or agencies we need to allocate monies for? There is money there. We can always um reallocate to different areas. And so uh, that's something we need to look at. Okay, um, we have a public hearing uh that was scheduled for one, uh, speaking of public hearings, that was scheduled for 1:15, um, Ohio Department of Development Target of Opportunity Grant Hearing. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Steve Johns, Assistant Director of Planning and Development. Uh, I came to you about two weeks ago to talk about this. Uh, this is regarding Lydia's House, a homeless shelter in the city of Norwood. Uh, they are asked the county to apply on their behalf for a Ohio Department of Development Target of Opportunity Grant. Uh, and we received some good word on that, that uh there's some additional funds where there will be no required match for uh that program. So it'll be an amount of $640,000 will be the application. $590,000 of that will go to the addition uh on the Lydia's House facility and $50,000 will go toward the administration of those funds. You, it's funny, we're talking about public involvement, right? Because this is the requirement uh for these funds is to have these two hearings uh for, to meet the Ohio Department of Development requirements regarding these CDBGCV funds. Uh, and this does meet the national objective of HUD regarding homeless uh housing. And so I need to make that uh for the record. And once we wrap up these public hearings, we will continue uh for the application process and then uh follow additional HUD guidelines and then eventually get the bid out for this project. So I don't believe there's anyone to hear to comment on this uh pr- program, but uh give the public the opportunity is, is something that uh this hearing is all about.
Thank you so much. Is anyone here to comment on this public hearing? Hearing none. Thank you so much. I uh see if there's any discussion. Uh, Vice President Reese, Commissioner Treehouse. Commissioner Treehouse. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
I'd like to make a motion to close uh the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. And just for the public that is here, uh, public comments are on Thursday. Um, and so you're welcome to come on Thursdays and do that. Um, it was mentioned, we had a evening meeting, which was packed with women and girls uh agenda. We, we were so packed, we were able to get everything in. But at that point, if anybody wanted to make public comment about anything, uh, that was on a Thursday in the evening. Um, so they were open to do that uh also. So there are many Thursdays in the month and anybody that wants to come forward uh to comment can do that. I'm going to move forward. Next item on our agenda. Go to comments and motions. I have a couple of things of the commissioners. Um, May the 6th, um, the president came here to meet with me for my birthday and I thanked him for that. Um, and so it was a, a great meeting, a great time. We learned a lot about infrastructure bill. He was really uh wanted to emphasize parts, um, bi- bipartisan supporter of the infrastructure bill. Uh, Rob Portman and Senator Brown were both on the stage together to show their unity as it relates to this bill and how important it is. So it was a great time uh had, very informative. Uh, May the 11th, I uh, we had a One Ohio Region Two meeting um upstairs because um maybe Commissioner Treehouse will talk more about that, but um the, the uh commission, uh, the board, the Region Two, One Foundation Group decided and voted for uh Commissioner Treehouse to be chosen as a state rep to go up on Monday to, for more discussion as we look at uh distribution of uh over 800 million dollars. I also attended the um Cincinnati Visitors Bureau uh executive session, um, executive, executive um committee meeting. I'm sort of not here, but I'm here. So um um, and uh we were talking about tourism and where we are and what we need to do. And tourism, of course, is uh picking up. Um, and one other comment I wanted to make, May the uh 16th, the governor has asked that we lower the flag uh for COVID-19 deaths. Um, 1 million COVID-19 deaths and we'll be lowering our flag for that, for that uh pur- purpose. Um, I think that will do it for me. Uh, Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Um, I also attended the Ohio, One Ohio Meeting and it was great to see uh the experts that we uh selected to be on this board, see many of them in person and on Zoom. I think we've got a really good group. Um, and uh Commissioner Treehouse will speak more about that. Uh, but you know, we're looking at almost 36 million dollars that uh this group will oversee in terms of getting money out in the right areas, the right directions, right marketing, what should be done to fight this opioid crisis. Um, so um, I think we're off to a, a very good start. I also uh want to acknowledge someone who was also uh been in the fight uh of COVID-19 fighting uh from a medical perspective. It's been in the community for many, many years. Um, had a big birthday this Saturday. I attended uh that event, Dr. Keith Melvin. And uh many people know Dr. Melvin, who uh has been on the front lines as it relates to of fighting against COVID and all other issues prior to COVID. Uh, he's particularly been uh big on uh African-American men and getting them to get checkups and go to the doctor for preventative care. Uh, he's heavily involved uh in the community and he's a, a proud member of Alpha Phi Alpha as well as a member of the uh Gothic Lodge, Prince Al Mason's 122 and the, the Sinai Temple Shriner. So he's very active in the community, but he also is a caregiver of his wife um that he's providing. He is our uh primary caregiver. So he's doing that. He's being a doctor. He's in the community. But it was just great to see him celebrate 70 years um down at Duke Energy Center with a, a huge crowd that uh turned out uh for a good cause. He is also one of the founders and co-chairs of the Black and White Cancer Survivors Ball. He's a cancer survivor and he has a event every year uh honoring those who survived cancer and providing more information. So a lot of doctors there. So almost all my docs, I can get all my appointments done today. I don't, I don't have to go through a scheduling. You guys are here today. Check my blood pressure here on the side, but it was just a great, great event. Um, also wanted to say that uh people are uh certainly still experiencing hardships. And uh water disconnections started uh this past week as well as uh gas and electric being cut off. So we had a press conference, but I want to just keep telling people, if you're a senior citizen, we have a phone number for you, 513-743-9000, 513-743-9000. I also want to indicate that um I've been meeting uh with Director Patton and I want to thank the administration. When I first got elected, the first thing that I hosted was a relief-a-thon. I created that word. Uh, relief-a-thon is like a telethon, but in reverse. Telethon, we raising money, relief-a-thon, we're trying to connect the people to the resources. We had to do it by Zoom and um with what's going on with uh the disconnections that are just hap- starting to happen. Um, I've met with them about putting together another relief-a-thon, but this time in person. Uh, maybe at a Duke Energy Center or Woodline Rec Center uh that can get to people right away, right now. And Duke Energy is all on board. Water Works is on board. Uh, but the goal would not be, uh, we don't want to do no PR fair. Don't come in and hand out some envelopes or some brochures. It's to bring the computers. You go to this table, they got your water bill and they typing it in. You owe this. You go to that table and you got uh our good staff, Jobs Family Services, they done typed it in. You uh, you, you meet all the requirements, paid. Then you go back to Water Works, you've been paid, you're good. Same with um Duke Energy. Um, and I think that will help a lot of people. And I know that we have additional funds that have to get out the door by a certain time, but you'll have everyone there. If you're a senior citizen, you got a program over here. If you're um not, you qualify for this program, you're over here. So I know that uh they're working on that and hopefully we can get that moving as quick as possible because those disconnect vans are out there. And they, and they getting, they getting around. And we want to try to help as many people as we can before they are disconnected. Um, the other thing is uh we did have a good presentation from Frank Spataro, as well as uh Director Patton, about the Office of Youth. I'm very excited about that. Being able to make sure as best we can to get our positive employment and development, youth employment and development program to the youth before the street program gets to them. And I'm excited about what was presented as a pilot to get started, where we'll be able to capture the data, how many youth have we helped, be able to help as many youth, be able to stretch where you don't have to just be destitute to get a job, but if you are youth and you're qualified, you can go to work. Uh, so we're excited about that. Uh, the internship and fellowship program needed some tweaking. Uh, but I'm asking Administrator uh to please put that on a fast track because the summer is right around the corner. Uh, and people need to, these internships and fellowships, I think is a great opportunity for us to build those relationships uh to be the future directors uh of these departments one day. I forgot to say last week, uh, Happy Mother's Day to the mothers. And uh, the reason why I wanted to say it today, I was going to say, well, we missed it. I'll get back to it. But uh Bill Kilroy, uh, who is uh a, one of the pillars in our, in our county, uh, owns owns a number of franchises. And he put up that there were some mothers that are alive that didn't get a phone call, didn't get flowers, didn't get a visit, didn't get a thank you. And I couldn't imagine, Mother's Day is always difficult for me and many others who have lost their mothers. And I lost my mom. I would give anything for her to be back. But I just wanted to say to the mothers out there, working every day and hardworking and raising children and staying in the fight, I just wanted to say Happy Belated Mother's Day and recognize the mothers of Hamilton County who get up and do it, do it right. Those are my notes, I believe. I think. Those are my notes, and looking forward to hearing back about. Looking forward to getting this internship and fellowship program up going and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Melvin received a proclamation from the board to recognize his work and also for his birthday. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I was able to go to the Holocaust commemoration ceremony. The governor usually has this at the State House. And they headed down here in Cincinnati over in Union Terminal, because we've got the Holocaust Memorial Museum in that location. And they were promoting that and recognizing that Cincinnati has that great space. So I was really honored to go to that event. I also was on a call with the governor and Mayor Finan from Evendale and the mayors of Wood, Woodlawn and Lincoln Heights, Paul and Ruby Munfrinkinsky, about the gun range, where, and Sheriff Brown's office was on the call as well, trying to understand if the state could be part of the financial stack. With counties in, we've asked the federal government through earmark process to be in. The city's in, but the state maybe could help with some financing through either corrections or through a state capital budget. And so we had a conversation with the governor, and he said he would look into it. So that was the good news. So hopefully the state can be in with the financial stack. The gap funding is about 9 million at this point. And so I don't know if that's too much to ask, but I guess we'll find out. So hopefully that'll be productive conversation that we had. I also was able to go to the Seventh Annual Celebration of Marion Spencer a couple nights ago over at the Hilton. It's just a great celebration. They do a nice retrospective of Marion and Donald Spencer and all the contributions they made to this community and all the transcending that Marion did. So that was just really an honor as well to go to that one. And then lastly, we do have a birthday in the building. Lisa Daria is having her birthday today. I asked her for her age, and she wouldn't give it to me. So I'm just kidding. She told me, but I'm not going to tell anybody else. So happy birthday to Lisa. I don't know if she can hear us, but nice work out there at the front desk. Appreciate all that you do for the county. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Your conversation with the governor, and what role were you communicating with the governor?
What role was I?
Yeah. You were representing the county?
Yes. Dick Finan, the mayor of Evendale, put it together. And so I was helping the governor understand the, oh, and Jan Michelle was on the call too. I've neglected to say that. So it was about economic development in Evendale. It was about the safety issues that this range creates for the children, especially in Lincoln Heights and Woodlawn. And we were talking about, we had a rendering of the range and showed all the state-of-the-art things that will be in that facility if we can get that thing up and running.
Did you direct him back to my office since we're leading that?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Jeff Ludo.
Thank you, Madam President. No file leaves today officially, but just a couple of comments. It's been a couple of weeks now, but I did just want to thank all of the Hamilton County employees who served as poll workers and poll officials on Election Day. I, I had a small list that I was going to read off, but I don't have all of them. So I'm not going to insult anyone by not reading the entire list. But we had, we had employee, employees from department head and assistant administrator level, all through the ranks of the entire, through the entire county, working the polls on, on Election Day. And I know no one knows better than the commissioners, the type of day that Election Day is and, and the, the energy that that, that requires. So I do want to thank all of them who did that. And congratulate at an administrative level our, our staffing officials over at the Board of Elections who managed that on, so effectively on behalf of the county, knowing the short staffing issues that they were facing. So that's all my comments for today, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I'll move on to consent agenda items one through seven. Just a brief summary. Item one, a budget adjustment for Environmental Services BioWatch Grant, which is $250,000. Item two, accepting the purchase orders of Hamilton County and authorizing their execution and release, $649,000. Then I'll move down to item three. It's concrete work and waterproofing repairs at the Great American Ballpark for $145,855. And then there's also waterproofing repairs and concrete work at Paul Brown Stadium for $695,882. In addition, we are authorizing property insurance for Hamilton County properties, 1.1 million. And then item seven, just our JFS Director Report of Actions of $17,000 that was signed by Hamilton County Job and Family Services. Vice President Reese, you have any comments on the consent items?
Yes, I do actually. Item number two, item number two is the purchase orders totaling $649,000 plus dollars. Wanted to focus in on one, two areas. One is the Police Academy that Sheriff McGuffey. I know that's something that had been talked about and wanted to highlight that is being able to train and having 40 people enroll regarding that as we look at recruitment and future. So I think that's very positive. The other, the other issue I like to raise is, is $150,000 for the mural painting at Findlay Market. And certainly Artworks does great work and murals around the county. This is going to be a mural that goes into the Findlay Market proposed garage for $150,000 for the mural. Just wanted to, I don't know if the person or the people have been selected, but just wanted to make sure, and I know Artworks does try to make sure there's inclusiveness, particularly when they do projects with the city. I want to make sure that that's carried over in projects with the county. And wanted to bring up, because a person that most people who are in the arts world know, Annie Ruth. Annie Ruth, before we had Artwork, was doing murals and was having a very difficult time at the time, because we didn't have an infrastructure for it. And it indicated that there has been some difficulty of artists such as herself, and she's world renowned from here, of being able to participate, to get in the paperwork that they put on, or they already selected someone. And so they may do an art that is inclusive, but maybe the artist is not included. So I just wanted to make sure that Annie Ruth and her organization, as we put this bucket, that they have a opportunity unless we've already selected somebody. But they at least have an opportunity to, to participate. And I know that's been one of the issues. There's a, another organization led by Alanis Powell. And they've done the murals downtown. They've done a number of murals, African-American group. And I just want to make sure that they're non-excluded. I'm not, probably not on purpose, but I want to make sure they're aware, they're at the table, and they can also participate in something like this. But she had brought it up to me, not specifically just this project, but as just in general, that now we're doing all these murals and people with her expertise and her track record of not being a beginner artist, but being one that is, has a lot of notoriety, just has not been able to participate here locally as she has been able to do nationally. And so I just wanted to make sure that at least this information, she can be aware of it and be able to at least have transparency of possibly being able to be included.
I think that's a great point. And I was, I wrote a question, how are the artists selected? I know Artworks is responsible for deciding, but are you able to speak to this?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Phil Beck, Hamilton County Construction Executive. This is just the absolute beginning step in this process, making sure that we have the concept funded. And then Artworks will take the lead to help manage this process. One of the first steps is to create a committee, come up with what priorities are, what, what the committee would like to see in the mural, et cetera. And then there would be a national advertisement that Artworks would coordinate on the county's behalf. So I've made a note of the two entities that you mentioned, Commissioner Reese. It, it is by no means, you know, focused on any particular group or, or part of the country. It's wide open. And there's nobody that is pre-selected at this point. So yeah, just getting this process started.
Thank you. And I'm not, you know, doubting the committee and all of that. I'm not trying to get in that. I just wanted to make sure that sometimes we have things, and then it gets back to us that certain artists are being left behind. Those who have a national acclaim, or they're not on the African-American side, they're being left behind. Now, we're getting beginners, but the, you know, and then when we do these different art things, particularly among African-American, we don't really bring in those art. We don't bring in a Gilbert Young who's from here. We don't bring in, you know, an Annie Ruth. And she just had that conversation. She said, when I saw this, wasn't particularly to this project. But when I saw it, I thought maybe we should bring that up, and she could at least know about it or have some, I don't know what the process is, but some conversations, so they're not left behind. And we kind of say, well, we just gave it to another group, and, you know, they tried. But they seem to have these that have the national and international acclaim. They have been kind of left out of a lot of the processes and hidden behind a world search, if you will. We did a world search, and we just couldn't find anybody right here that was meeting those. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I don't know if that's Robert Bell, he was here. Maybe that's a Robert Bell also reach out issue as well for us.
All right, thank you.
That's great. Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
So I had number two. My last thing, Robert Bell got out of here. We got to the money. What happened? I wanted to just bring up what we have on here. We're going to be dealing with the stadium, some, some repairs, both at the Major League Baseball Stadium and the NFL Stadium. And we were, I wanted to, I wanted to get, yeah, item three, thank you. I wanted to just get back to, I want to get back to these quarterly reports, Mr. Administrator, on. We were getting quarterly reports on the inclusion piece. I know we don't have our disparity study in yet, but we were getting a, a report used to come in quarterly. What quarter we getting? We don't have first quarter. So I just wanted to make sure we can continue those, or if you have something coming soon.
Yeah, Madam President, if I could. So on the quarterly reports, I know Robert Bell is in fact pulling those reports together. So the first quarter ended, end of March, obviously. He then has to work to pull those numbers together out of, out of the performance financial system, work with the departments to make sure they're right. So he actually reviewed a draft of that with me just last week. So I'm hoping that in the next two weeks or so, we'll be able to turn around the first quarterly report to the board.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
No comments.
So at that point, no comments, additional comments. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one through seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
You have before you two executive sessions. I'd like to make a motion.
Madam President, before you make the motion, executive session. I have one comment I forgot to say. And I know all three of us adore him. Reverend Damon Lynch, Pastor Damon Lynch Jr., the father, preached his final sermon as the head pastor of New Jerusalem Baptist Church. And he's done so much for this county, this community. He and my grandfather were best friends. He preached my grandfather's eulogy, my grandmother. And just to know that that was his last as the head pastor of New Jerusalem. I know that we honored him last year. They had a retirement. Many of us was there, but this was the last one that they, that they could scream from the audience, preach Lynch. So we just want to thank him. I know all three of us been to the church over the years and just wanted to acknowledge him and thank him and his wife, First Lady Barbara Lynch, for all they have done in the community.
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to discuss collective bargaining. And then we have one additional one executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.